Dennis, you want to come up there or you want to stay back there?
I'm fine.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
You forward me.
Well, I've been looking forward to this, really have been. And I want to thank all of you for coming. I kind of made this up so I could keep on track. I want to thank all of you for coming to the first St. Mary Town Hall meeting. It won't be the last, so I'll be sure to tell your neighbors. I'm sorry, Francis, huh? She need something?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, okay. And I want to thank CMA for letting us have it here because it had been awful cold to stand outside on the street corner, so. And like I said, I wanted to have this meeting for a long time because I believe this is one of the ways that the United States Constitution allows us a voice in how we're governed. Freedom of speech and the freedom of the press are powerful tools for change. And I've always said and will always continue to contend that the city is its people. The people are the city's business because without people and businesses that the people create here, the city would have no revenue and would no longer be a living entity. I am here more as a citizen than as an alderwoman, but as your elected official, it is my duty to listen to you, and that's my goal today. We are at crossroads in this town. We know our problems, and I believe we know how to solve them. We just need to start putting one foot in front of the other and go forward, not looking in the rearview mirror, for those days are gone. Today, in any day you wish to speak with me, is an opportunity to speak your mind, ask your questions, give us ideas, offer in your unique way to help turn the city around for the better. People like to point at our board and complain we don't work together. Majority of the time, that's the truth, unfortunately. However, there is also truth that there is strength in numbers. This forum offers the citizens the opportunity to come together and strengthen what is left of the fabric of the city. The people need to rise up and insist their elected officials listen to them, and if they won't listen and do, then put people in office who will. So I want to thank you again for coming.
I think at this juncture, we need to know why we are here. And the main purpose of us being here is to provide input to this panel, to this meeting, to use as impetus to do for the citizens in the city what needs to be done. St. Mary has gone through numerous changes. However, we as citizens need to help St. Mary grow better and bigger because it's all about the numbers. Without the numbers, we're lost. We're not going to get much. I've been talking with officials in the county, with me being the chairperson of the Democratic Central Committee, which governs all of the democratic processes in the county. I've found that we don't get much because we don't have many numbers. You know, most things are driven by numbers. They're not driven by, you know, certain suggestions. We have to support those suggestions with numbers. And we've seen quite a few things going in the city, and it's not very good because we haven't grown. We have went the opposite way. Our water bill is higher, you know, the services are lesser. Our budget is impacted by too many employees and not enough citizens' input for committees to help the city, just like Mr. Smith has stated. Numerous complaints have been lodged against the city. However, very few people have come forth to help the city. We need to, we need to start helping the city. My sister always tell me, "We were taught when you saw a problem, you were to propose a solution before you gave any comment." That was what you were supposed to do. Bring something positive to the table, whether it was rejected or accepted, you were to propose it. So at this juncture, we want to set some guidelines. We're not here to complain or to drag down the city officials. I wish more were here because they need to know what the citizens are saying and what they need. I just think that we need to be positive, we need to be clear, and to the point. However, if it takes you 15 minutes to get out what you need to say, say it. We always feel better when we can put it on the table. So I think that, I think this could be a brainstorming session, one of many to come, so we can get our ideas out for the city of St. Mary, so it can grow and be positive. So at this point, what concerns do you have? What issues do you see? Anyone have any concerns or issues?
Possibly the council people. How many actual occupied residents, residences are there in the municipality?
Honestly, I don't know the exact number. Do you know, Dennis?
I have 185 water connections, so about 185 residents. Actual residents, not, but the population, that doesn't, that doesn't have nothing to do with the population.
Right. Well, I was going to say, like Mr. Sissel's house up the road, he's got connections. He does live here, so.
I'm talking active connections.
Yeah, I thought he had active connections. I could be wrong, but I thought he had. But I didn't know, you know, how many, you know, actual homes with families in there were in the municipality, not necessarily just, my, my street, there's enough abandoned stuff, almost abandoned stuff, but, yeah, I'm just curious. So you got 185 connections, though, huh? Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, like, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm a newcomer here, and I'm used to big numbers where I came from because of the big municipality. I think Florissant was, we'll say it's one of the top 10 cities in the state, obviously San Jose City, Columbia, Springfield, those are, you know, majors, but I thought we were like, you know, honestly, I thought we were like number six at one point. I don't know whether that's true or not. So it's on a just completely different scale. You know, somebody talks about spending $500,000 or $1 million, it's like, okay. But when you get down to a small town, it's like, you know, if you divide that cost up among, you know, a small group of people, you know, it's like, you know, I'm a tight one, you know, it's like, you know, the cost of the water, I've heard numbers like 1.2 million or something like that for the water, bringing water from St. John, if you divide that up. I thought, I just, you know, just, thin air, I just figured, okay, we got a population of 370, thereabouts. If there's 3.7 people per household, I'm an oddity, that'd be about 100 residences. Okay, divide 1.2 million dollars by 100 residents, that's $12,000 per home. That's a massive expenditure. And I know the city doesn't like wells, but I mean, the city could just, well, you know, you could dig everybody in a brand-new, you know, serious heavy-duty quality well, and, you know, if you did 100 of them, you know, the well digger's like, "Yeah, I could, you know, we normally charge how much, but if you're going to give me 100 of them, we can do it really, really cheap." And it's like...
We can't do that because we are in a water system contract, so, correct me on this.
It's not just that, Diane.
I don't know, I don't know about water systems.
Department of Natural Resources, the geological section in Roble, did not let us drill. We wanted to, but they wouldn't allow it, so we had to have an alternative source. Because when you dig down in this soil down here, the water table is so low, okay, that all you get is brackish water, water that's not fit to drink. And unless you work here on the hill like Barto's place or someplace like that, or further up the hill, you might find a good well, but they wouldn't let us drill.
Well, my understanding, okay, now, there's perched water. If you go down, you know, 15 feet or something like that, you're going to find perched water. And we're, stone's throw from the Mississippi, you know, we're the old channel. But, you know, if you go down, you know, you're supposed to get down to bedrock, go through bedrock, and then on distance, and then, you know, you know, case it all the way down through there, and then beyond that, you know, if you hit water, you know, it's legally usable water irregardless of flavor. So my understanding is part of our problem is that we've been using that perched water, which is just, you know, river water coming through the sand or whatever, and it's like, that's, no, that, you know, you've got to go down through bedrock, otherwise you're violating state law. So, but...
All I know, all I know, and have been told by the regulators, that they will not allow us to drill a well in this city.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Because that would have been a much cheaper route to go than what we're doing now.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can hear.
The Department of Natural Resources would not allow us to drill a well.
Well, to address the, the cost of the water a little bit, I have been, I have been several times to the PWSD up there and talked with them about it and gotten, I picked up a copy of our contract because I didn't have access to that, to see just all what was, what the city, back in 2009, this contract was written, and compared it to what we're paying, what we paid them is like $4.40 per 1,000 gallons, and we are paying $23 a person for the first 1,000 gallons into your house each month, and it's 11-something, I think it's 11-something each 1,000 after that. I forgot to check that when I control it. I should have brought it with me. I didn't think of, I didn't know that would come up today. It is a tremendous gap between what, what we purchase it for and the profit that we make off of it. But we do have a large debt, and the board is the one, not the people, that decided a couple of years ago to raise the rates to that height, and it has been a burden on a lot of people.
Well, I...
I know most families are close to $200 a month for a family of four, six people. So that's, but there's nothing that we can do about this because the board voted it and made an ordinance.
Excuse me. I beg to differ with you because...
Okay, we need to hear you, Dennis.
Mr. Gerardo can back me up on this. Missouri Rural Development, that we got our bonds with and went through, they're the ones that told us that's the price that we have to get in order to maintain our reserves, our replacement costs, and all this other. Okay, it's just not buying the water. We got all that that we have to deal with. They're the ones that told us what we had to do. Otherwise, we couldn't have done what we did. So the board didn't have a choice. That was something that we had to do. Now, in 30 years, when everything's paid off and everything else, then we can set our own prices. Then the board can set their own prices. But until we pay off the loan or the bonds and everything, that $850,000 that we borrowed, the rates are going to have to be, the rates are set by Missouri, by the Rural Development, not by the board, the city board. And we're told what to set the price, and Mr. Gerardo was on the board also at the time that we had to raise those rates up to that debt point.
The, I'm used to the idea...
Excuse me, Dave. Let him, let him address that issue, because I want to know where the $850,000 came from.
Well, what they did is they rolled all of the loans into one. In other words, we already had ones that we were already paying off from the system that we had that wasn't being maintained, that was run by the wayside. And I don't remember them telling us we couldn't drill another well. They just wouldn't fund us to put in another well because they kept giving us money for our system, and then it wasn't paying off for them because we weren't running the system properly, maintaining it. And they said in their statement that systems built in the 1930s were in better operating condition than ours because they were maintained. Our system was in disarray by choice, and it had to be by choice that we had to turn things around. And they weren't going to help us get money to fund to put in another well. They said, "If you get water from someone else, we'll help you." But they're not letting us do it on our own because we had tried several times and failed.
Well, I, I'm, I'm making an oddball statement. I'm used to the idea of, you know, the first batch, you know, you're talking $23, thereabouts, for the first 1,000 gallons of water. I'm used to the idea of, you know, the, the cost of just being hooked up to a utility, there is a cost. So, you know, $23 for the first 1,000, and then $1,000. It's a penny a gallon, thereabouts, and I don't, I don't have a flock of kids, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say a penny a gallon is a lot of money, so. How, sewer disposal, is it about, about the same thing, you know, a penny a gallon for each after?
About $18, $18 for the first 1,000 gallons, right, Dennis?
Well, I thought it was like 23 or something like that for first...
It's a little lower than the water rates.
Oh, I thought it was a little more, but, yeah, I don't know what the subsequent was.
That's only if, that's only if they have the water in the sewer flipped upside down, which happens on my bill quite often, where I'm paying more for sewer than water, but that's just, that might happen, but no, it's, here, it's, it's, sewer is a lower rate than the, than the water.
Okay.
How much is it, Dennis? You know water, man, you know?
I'm not exactly sure.
No?
I know that it's like, like she said, about $18 and something for the first 1,000 gallons, and then it's $5 or something a gallon, 1,000 gallons after that. So it's not real expensive like the water.
It's more than that?
Yeah, because I only use 400 gallons a month, and my bill is $42 a month.
Yeah, that's, I'm not making my minimum by, by $43 or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm way down, so it's more than $18, the first 1,000.
Water and sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But if you get 18...
Specifically, water.
In 18, that's 36. My bill is...
It's 23 for the water.
Yeah, it is.
And 18, about 18.50, so, yeah.
I think more, I think it's more than $18 for sewer, for the first batch.
Oh, I thought you said it was 18, he said $18 and 9 something for the water, but it's more.
No, for the sewer. Yeah, 23 for the water.
So it was 22 or 26.
So we understand that we're kind of in this situation, we can't do anything about the water right now because we're having to do what the rural development tells us to do, to an extent, and we've got to deal with the bills and the, and the loans. Okay, that's new. That's done. We kind of know we've got to deal with it. But I'm looking at empty homes, tax rates on homes, and the value of my home is very low, and of course, it should be because unfortunately I can't keep it up like I'd like to. But what's frustrating to me is the taxes I'm paying for seem like more than what the houses were. Okay, I've got to do that because, you know, that's what it is. Okay, every penny I, I have is extremely budgeted. It's, I can get my city taxes. Now, that one I'm up on, hey, I'm up on my city taxes because that one's not as bad as it could be. It's a county one that's killing me right now. But for those of us in, and this whole community is a lot of elderly and economically depressed people. We're on limited funds. Debt is going to make it very hard for us to make St. Mary grow because we're not getting in the young people who want to go and make some money. Debt is an issue. We don't have a job base here. We don't have housing really available for them here, and it's hard to get people to come in if that economic base isn't there for them. They have, there's, if somebody comes and doesn't have a car, there's nowhere around here they can walk to go to work. There's not...
Or the young people that are growing up.
They're not coming in, they're leaving.
Yeah, they're leaving, and I don't, yeah.
Okay, so that leads to, what is the Chamber of Commerce doing? What, I mean, do not the board have some input into how do we make St. Mary grow? How do we make it viable? You know, we have plenty of land around, and if you solicit and network and do it on a consistent basis, if you had a job offer to come in here, that would bring jobs. There are plenty of places that are empty that need minimal care, really and truly to be livable. So my question is, where does the Chamber of Commerce fit in here? And I wish the mayor was here so I could ask the question, because usually, can either of you, all the persons answer whether or not she belongs to the small, the mayor's group for small towns where they can network, and they may, there's, I'm sure there are several towns just like St. Mary that are dying on the, you know, one big shovel full of any dirt will bury us, really and truly, because we don't have anything going, nothing, but a flashing light. And this is a viable, to me, this is a viable area, and you could actually network and get a business to come in here and try it, but it would take a city, look at this. How many is the census? 300 something, according to that little...
185.
350.
No, it's 3 something, right?
350 now.
And it's less than 10%, what, 1%? Interested in what's going on, and I think that, since I'm an outsider coming in, been trying, pawning to get out, but I'm still here, it's because people have lost confidence in the leadership. That's not a put-down.
No.
That is a fact, okay? They have lost confidence in the leadership. They have lost sight. I, I hear how St. Mary used to be. That's what I, when I first came here for the first five or six years, how St. Mary, and people tried, but they kept getting down so much, and they saw no, we don't see progress. Where, where does our taxes go? We have roads that are undrivable. Where, where does our taxes go? You know, if, I live off of the highway, and in the summer, roadkill, I mean, you just, I go out there and clean it up myself, okay? So if we're going to have employees and have a payroll, is that why our taxes are going up? We're still paying school taxes in, on a city level and on a county level. So why? So all I'm asking is, and I wish the mayor had been here so I can ask her, is she networking? Because there is something that needs to be urgently done to keep this town alive because the average age of any occupant here is 50-plus. 50-plus. And we all hate to see December come. December should be, ho, 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 mayor, no, it's taxes, taxes. And if you're living on a set income, you got to contend with the high water that you can't use half the time. You have to contend with the electric bill. And just for brevity's sake, when the city comes to your property and they find something wrong, they will not knock on your door and tell you that it's wrong if it's costing you money. I know firsthand. I know firsthand, and it should be that anytime anybody comes on your property that does not, is representing the city, you have the courtesy. They should give you the courtesy of knocking on your door, telling you why they are on your property and what they're going to do, and then telling you whether or not it's been done or not. When the older people promises you something that they're going to remove from your property, you shouldn't have to call them five or six times, and they keep telling you, "We're going to take care of it, we're going to take care of it," and never, it never gets done over a three-year period of time. So we've got to come up with a way where the people can regain that confidence.
And have accountability.
Accountability, yes. Really and truly. And most of the people don't come out because you know what they say? Why? We'll tell you, we'll tell you, we'll, we'll tell you what we would like for you to consider doing, but you're going to do what you want to do anyway. And that has bared out ever since I've been here.
You know, you're talking about what, opportunities, why would somebody come out here? One of the things that I find interesting, but it's also, you know, having gone through it, now it's a little bit of a thorn, building codes.
Oh, don't go there.
Is that, the, well...
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Having building codes almost puts a house into a different economic category, and...
However, that does not have to be a burden if the person is qualified to do the building inspection.
Well, that's...
Having building codes, if they are ordinance right, correctly...
No, what, what I was getting at is, you know, there needs to be, you know, we have, you know, on my street, there are a number of vacant homes. There needs to be opportunity, and I'm still trying to get another one that's up the street from me, but there needs to be opportunities for entrepreneurs or just somebody looking for a home, and I've got people in my family that need homes. The building codes, I think, if you take an older structure that was built under, you know, God knows what, you know, techniques, and then you suddenly put building codes on there, you know, it completely almost eliminates those homes for marketability. So, you know...
What the problem is, though, I didn't mean to cut you off, what the problem is, is there is no stated, consistent, written-down order of what the building code exactly entails. I have asked to see it, okay? The person who, you go down and pay your $35 for a building permit, nobody ever comes and let you know if, when they are going to, in my case, it may be different with you, they're going to inspect it if it's up the code, down the code, or whatever. You pay your $35, you're asked to see what the building code is. Well, it's in an ordinance. Well, where is the ordinance? We have to research it. Okay, research it. It's going to cost you $25, $15, or whatever. You have to request it. The ordinance should be where, if there is an ordinance, it should be where any citizen can walk into city hall and flip through whatever, and this ain't a computer. People would donate a computer. And you put the ordinance in there, and you should be able to read it if you want it, and then print it off at a minimal cost, because we're all taxpayers. We're all taxpayers. $15, $15 to $25 to research an ordinance, it's ridiculous. It really, but that's what the problem is, Dave, as I see it. You don't ever know what you're going to get when it comes to building code, because we do not have anyone who does the building inspections for St. Mary proper.
That's trained.
That's trained, that has the credentials. I don't know how they are appointed, and that has always been a mystery to me.
The problem, though, what I have found, the problem with that was that you do not have to know a hammer from a nail to be a building inspector.
Thank you.
That is true. That is true in the state of Missouri, there's no...
I was waiting on somebody else to say that because I don't want to...
That's my, because I argued that same thing when, when our police, our police chief became the building inspector because they, they didn't have anyone to do that.
And that's wrong.
And, and, and on the same subject, what frustrates me is when we've done repairs on our home, give you an example, electric, we took it from a fuse box to an actual breaker box.
Where your taxes go.
Citizens electric came out and were amazed at the job done, okay? They completely jumped on it, said, "Wow, you did a great job." They completely approved it. I doubt that would have happened if somebody else had come and looked at it, because if you don't know what you're doing...
And if you don't know what you're looking at, how can you give it a name?
Right, right, how could you know? You know, my house is such a unique house because it was built in the late 1800s, early 1900s.
No, 17...
1700, excuse me, 1790 to 1810, okay, one part of it, and stood until the 50s that way. One wall cabin, one-room wall cabin, and the rest of it was added on to it. There isn't a straight wall, straight floor, straight corner. Everything in my house is crooked, so anything we do is going to be a lot of fun.
Be blessed, because I've got one that was built in 2011 that I went for straight wall.
And the frustration is, is my house, because of its unique situation, is going to be harder to inspect and to meet codes, just because of the way it is. I can't even get insurance on it because of the way it is.
Well, if you knew what the codes were...
That would help.
Okay, so you, knowledge is power.
Personally, just speaking, just listening, it seems to me that if you've paid your $35 to the inspection, you should have a piece of paper that says, "This is what you need to do."
This is what we're going to be looking at.
Yes.
This is what has to happen. Da, 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 one, two, three, four, and be done with it.
But I have, I have heard people that had that inspection, and then they're told that they have to have all these things done before they can even move themselves into the house, and some things are not necessary to be done before you move into the house. I mean, you don't need to have, do you have to have your rain gutters on before you move into the house?
No.
No, but in, some people have had to have that. I would believe, I would believe that what would be required, and it is in other cities that I know, are safety issues such as electric, water, whether the outlets are properly done... Whether the outlets are properly done according to whether they're close to water or whatever. Those are the type of issues that they have to have correct when you go in, that the wiring is safe. You know, these are the type of things they expect, okay? That aesthetic value is not necessarily something because you may be buying an older home and working on it. I came from a community that had a hundred thousand people. They were buying houses for a dollar. They corrected the safety issues and moved in and started working on the aesthetic stuff. That's what I expect. You know, you should be able to live in a house you're working on if you don't have a lot of income. Cause very few of us can go buy three or four houses and, and, and flip them. That, that's not this environment in this community. And that's what's frustrating. If I could just, like you said, go to city hall and pull out the folder with all the building codes in it and ordinances. And be able to look at it myself.
That's a problem in itself, going down there and getting something done.
Yeah. So when, uh, when have there been an audit of the ordinances? Because an ordinance that was put in action, when did St. Mary come into bed? It doesn't matter. Let's just say after nineteen hundred. There are some ordinances that have no place. So when have there been a review of them?
On that same thing, there was an offer for it, what, about five years ago?
For what?
For, uh, a, a review of the, the ordinances. They were gonna go and review and show up and pull out the, or notify the city of the ones that no longer were valid or were not legal.
I had talked to University Extension, Tish, and she said, well, let's first, let's get the community survey under our belt. And then we worked on it for, I think it was six, eight months and then the newly elected board.
Dropped it.
Dropped it.
She offered.
The free community survey.
She was offering to do this for free. Now, I will inform you all, we no longer have that person there in the board at the Missouri Extension office. She has moved. So that position is now vacant. So there is no community, a person trained to help develop the community. She's gone. She's in Columbia. Okay, she moved, she's in a new position. So that is now vacant. So we could have utilized a service for free that the University of Extension was going to do for us. And we turned it down. And this is what frustrates me about this city. Something is offered to better the city and because, because certain people don't want their nefarious hands that have been into the ordinance, they don't want to get caught, they won't let us do it.
Also, there are a lot of, there are a lot of people.
Hold up, I'm trying to record all this. Cause guaranteed, I'm gonna get a response to everything you guys bring up. Yeah, but, uh, I can't write as fast as you guys are shooting the bullets, okay? So you said Tish is gone, but I know there is a replacement. Well, that's not a problem.
They're looking for a replacement.
That's not a problem. I've get a hold of Tish and one qualifier on all this. Let's be proactive, let's not look back so much, but let's take the back.
My thing is, is, is that needs to be done. Cause we really do have a lot on the books that shouldn't be.
And we have people here that are degreed, who have done this kind of work in this neighborhood. That is a citizen of St. Mary. So why are we not utilizing our internal, uh, applications that we already have? There are people here who did jobs like this before.
That's kind of what we're asking here.
Okay, well then let me put something on, let me put something on the floor.
Do this stuff in here.
No, put it on the table.
Okay, I'm gonna put it on the table, smart. Okay. I do volunteer work with the board, Extension, and I do audits, financial audits and things with them. I'm more than willing to, with other people to sit there and go through. You know, so it wouldn't best be one person, you know, like a, a board of at least three. You have to have at least three on the, 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 uh, group. And go through the ordinances to find out which ones may no longer be effective. I mean, we're not gonna be able to do anything, but we could bring it up to the board itself. So the board could be proactive on it. I'm willing to donate my time and go through that and do that, okay? I'm, I'm volunteering for that job and I know it's gonna be a lengthy job, but I would be willing to do it.
And that is to do?
To sit down and go through and, and look at the ordinance, see which ones are no longer effective. Which ones may be duplicates, which ones we, you know, may be questionable. And be able to put it in front of the board so the board can make an educated and, and, and logical decision on what needs to be done.
Okay, honor, is this what you're saying? Can we select citizens or what directions of a board member to audit the ordinances? Okay, that's already been thrown on the table. It hadn't reached the board yet. It just happened three days ago.
Okay, well, I'm.
At the city clerk. But now, these will be brought forward to the board and the clerk.
I'm willing to be one of the people to do it because that was something I did in the military. I worked with regulations all the time. So I've had experience in that. And like I said, I do something similar to that with the Extension Board, okay? I'm not on the board anymore, but I will be, I already know that. But I'm gonna be doing an audit for the, uh, four H. That's another audit. I've done audits for the last six years. I've done financial audits, but I have done regulations too and, and stuff like that. I've done SOPs, you know, I'm still doing it. So I'm willing to do this. I just, I don't want to be doing it by myself because that, that's not right. We have to have several people working and we need somebody in charge of that, whether it be the mayor, the city clerk, another board member. It, it doesn't matter. It just needs, there needs to be somebody directing us as a group.
The city clerk does have access to them because I know at one time when he was fairly new, he, he had a bunch of them pulled up. And I was talking to him about it and he.
Okay, so why, why are not the ordinances made available for each, for a citizen?
They are, they are in books inside city hall. All right, Dennis, on that table. And they're broken down into different categories. Okay, Dennis, you weren't here, but they asked about the board public considering a citizen or a group of citizens to help audit and review the ordinances with the direction of a board member or a city clerk. Cause you had stepped down, down here.
Understood, thank you.
As I said, we have ordinance that needs to be reviewed and audited. So I'll, I'll contact Tish and find out what she, or her take was. And then I'll pass it on to you guys. You know, pass it to the board.
I, I wanted to make a comment of my mother's house up in the city. And this is again in Florissant, uh, built about nineteen fifty, thereabouts. And it's got this cloth covered wiring which is absolutely antique. It might be a sixty amp. It is genuine breakers. It's not fuses. But she's got maybe a sixty amp service in the house. It might be a hundred amp, but I think it's sixty amp. Uh, two-prong wall outlets, not three-pronged. And the city of Florissant, we've got building codes in, in St. Louis County. We've got building codes in Florissant. And as goofy as that house is, you know, we could walk out of it, sell it. Somebody else could buy it as long as nobody touches the electrical system and messes with it. It'll pass, you know, the next occupancy, you know, to get an occupancy permit. It passes, you know. As soon as you start messing with it, then you gotta upgrade all of it. You know, if, if you're gonna, you know, put on an addition, put in new wiring or something like that, you gotta go through the whole thing. If you're gonna change plumbing, you gotta change the whole thing. But as long as you don't mess with it, they'll give you an occupancy permit. It could be goofy, they'll give you an occupancy permit. And I'm wondering.
You don't have to have any qualifications. You're building inspector in the state of Missouri.
No, that, it has nothing to do. It, it know what, what they've done is they've grandfathered everything. You know, if, if anything that was built before the new codes came in, it's grandfathered. It doesn't have to be brought up to the new code. Anything that's built after that has to be up, built to the new code. But all this other stuff, old stuff, that's the way it was built. You know, it's not worth as much as the newer houses. But I, I, you know, I think would help, you know, all the vacant houses in this community. If they could be grandfathered, say, okay, we instituted a building code on this date. Anything that was built before that, whatever it is. It might be a thousand dollar house, it might be a five hundred dollar house. If you wanna live in that thing, we'll give you an occupancy permit. God knows what you're gonna get, but we'll give you an occupancy permit. Uh, and, but that, you know, you get people. Hey, you know, you get occupied homes and, you know, there might be a ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar house, thirty thousand dollar house. If somebody wants to, you know, if, if somebody wants a hundred thousand dollar house, they'll go to Perryville, they'll go to St. Jen, they'll go to St. Louis. You know, if you want a cheap house, it's a small town. So, you know, but, you know, small towns don't necessarily have the building codes and all the regulations that make housing expensive. So, you know, I, I think if they could just, you know, ease up on the building codes. Or just say, okay, well, we had instituted building codes on this date. Anything built after that date has to be up to the new building codes. Anything built before that, whatever you had, what you have.
You should have known what the new building codes are.
Beg pardon?
Hey, uh, with this electrical thing on the housing and the codes. I teach over at the career center. We might possibly be able to engage in a, in a small contract with the career center. They build a house every year down in Perryville. And that would be great training for the young students to come in and wire a house. Cause they have to, they have to wire according to code in, in Perryville. They build one every year. It might be, I can talk with the folks and see if they're willing to, uh, engage with the board. And using some of the houses as training sites to do, uh, you know, projects. That would really help us build up occupancy rate, which will build up population, which will build our numbers and increase the value of the town.
And it would also advertise the fact of what we're doing and the fact that we are doing this as a community thing, uh, to allow students come in. And that, that's good publicity.
We're doing positive. We're trying to, to rebuild what's been kind of deteriorating because things left of all will deteriorate.
Affordable housing too.
Yes, affordable housing.
Because everybody that lives between St. Jen and Perryville, out Bloomstead, we know you got the drive to get where you're going. And a lot of people are looking for affordable housing. And that would be, yeah, that, that's a positive step in the right direction.
And you know, the other thing, we are not totally, uh, out of the ballpark as far as economic development. Because we have an industrial park and the only thing that's down there is what used to be the Sabreliner Building. And it's being used as storage now is my understanding. And then the firehouse, all the rest of that property around there. When I came here eighteen years ago, I was promised it was gonna be a booming, growing town and something's happened.
Well, I remember when the gas station wasn't up there.
Right, so there, there is.
It was there enclosed.
There's places that we cannot build and we know that. We don't have to hear that all the time. We know that there are places, but that, if it can be utilized for something. It's, it was, has been utilized before to, to, it was offered for the, the yard sale thing, a sixty-one yard sale. I think that there could be things it could be used for.
When Jay Wilson was mayor, I think it was around two thousand nine or eight. He and the board put forth the two thousand three building codes. And that's what we had to be abided by. And then that's when the building inspections came up for occupancy permit and all of that. But I like the idea of something existing being grandfathered in. And then if they want to build new. Then go by the two thousand three or whatever building codes.
I haven't figured out how that doesn't violate an ex post facto law. I'm not, I'm not a legal attorney, but it's like, you know. It's like making a nineteen seventy-five car meet the two thousand and twelve standards. It's like, it was built, you know, in two thousand and seventy-five. You know, it met the standards that were in effect at that time. It doesn't have to meet the current standards. You can drive a million miles. Beg pardon?
You can't get good gas mileage on something built a long time ago that you can't now.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that they're not making it meet the standards, EPA standards and whatnot. You know, it, uh. It, I, and you know, here, you know, you've got a house that was built, you know, at whatever time and you come up with a new law and you're saying, well, that house doesn't meet the new law. It met the laws that were in place at the time of its construction, you know. So, which may or may not be anything.
St. Jen sometimes because people want to upgrade, put in, uh, triple pane windows or double pane windows and they've got an old home. And they're not allowed to do that because of the historical value of the home. It, it changes something. So I think that's been something, and I just read a little bit about.
Landmark commission, historic preservation.
Yes, historic preservation. We don't have to keep it that way. We're not talking about the same thing here though.
Is, is that on, you know, registered historic places or is it just in the community?
It's a certain area and St. Jen is considered a historical area and they look at your home. And if your home is in that, built in that period, you have to abide by the landmark commission. Everything you do has got to match that building at that time.
Right, okay. Well, my, my mom's house, it's in, you know, the geographic, what is generically referred to as Old Town Florissant. So I mean, Florissant gets real snitty about stuff in Old Town. It's like, mom's house is in really unfortunate sad shape. And it's, she could walk out of it tomorrow, sell it, get an occupancy.
Talking about St. Mary and, and the building codes, I really like the idea of, uh, if you're going to do any improvements to your house. In other words, you're going to add electrical something in your home, then maybe you ought to bring your electrical code up, you know. When you're really doing something to your house, like, okay, you're gonna add a, um, this room over here. Okay, well then you need to bring your electrical up because you're, you're getting into it. So that needs to be a requirement. That to me makes more sense than telling somebody, okay, now you, you're living there, I mean, you've been here for eighteen years, but now you've got to meet this code. You know, yeah, I know they don't make you do that, but if you left, then that house has to be brought to code. And that doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything wrong with the house, um, as long as the safety issues are met. And that means if there's no frayed wiring in there, it's, the old wiring is not a problem if it's, unless it's frayed, hasn't been taken care of. Um, the system is being overworked, then it becomes a problem. Plumbing, if it hasn't been done properly or it's leaking, okay, well then it's gotta be redone. You know, that, those are common sense things. That's what I'm looking at. Let's do some common sense things instead of arbitrarily making a decision on something and then everybody has to follow it. Because that's, that's not necessarily right. And I'm standing, I'm doing that from the point of living in a house that is one of the three oldest homes here in St. Mary. Okay? It's, it's been researched and I know that one half of my house is one of the oldest buildings in St. Mary. Okay, there's no way that part of the house will ever meet the building codes that they have out here right now. Because of the way it was built and what it was built for. All I can do is build around it and anything I add into it, I have to make sure is up to code. The building itself is never going to, it can't. But that's what's frustrating me because I'm a resident here. I'm trying to follow the, the rules, can't find them. I get pushed away and told, okay, well, we have to research it. I can't afford to pay for the research. So basically I feel like I'm a mushroom in a cave and being fed manure. And that's frustrating for me because I would like to know what's going on. I would like to be an active part of this community. This community that I chose to live here because it was a nice, happy, loving community. At least it was when I raised my son. And that's what I want to be continued. I, because it's a safer place to raise children than it is anywhere else that I know of.
Just gonna restate and rephrase that so it can be put in the, in the, uh, how can it be made a course? How can citizens?
What did you just ask?
To paraphrase it or to put it in a course format. How would you put that? Cause all of these will be added to the board or a member of the board.
I don't know. Does anyone have a way to paraphrase what I said?
Basically, any new, new work is gonna have to meet the code. And I, like, like what she's, I can understand what she's saying. Like my house, let's say I wanted to build, you know, nine hundred square foot addition on the back of my house. And let's say I still have my sixty amp service in there. To supply electricity for that addition, that sixty amp is not gonna, you're gonna have to upgrade the entire house, okay? But if you're just gonna live in that house, that sixty amp service has been going all this time, leave it go. If you're gonna do the improvements and additions, then you're gonna have to upgrade the electric. Just using that for an example.
So what you're basically saying is how can citizens be more aware of what is needed in remodeling a home?
With emphasis placed on, uh, leaving the, the older part the way it is. And any additions would fall under the new codes.
Well, and then even, even sometimes you put the addition in there, if you don't have electrical service that's gonna support that addition. You're gonna have to redo the whole electrical anyway, you know.
But.
Well, let me, let me get this straight. I'm trying to get it in a course and format. How can citizens be more aware of what is needed in remodeling an, an older home? Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Because they're going to want a course.
Okay, yeah.
Is, is that sufficient?
That's sufficient. That's sufficient.
Detailed instructions.
I think, I think you're also asking for, for, um, ability to see.
Yes.
The building codes. When you make it, when you pay your money to have your house inspected, you should have a copy of the building codes given to you.
Starting off with.
I've, I've got an odd, odd thing to say. Okay, I did absolutely major rehab on my own. Dennis, close your ears. Okay, you know, there, there's different aspects of building house that are regulated. And as you do a little bit of the, you know, you'll, you'll have the excavation that has to be a certain way. You'll get an, an inspector out there to make sure it's done a certain way. Then you, you know, pour the concrete foundation and you get the inspector to, uh, to make sure it was done properly. Uh, the underground utilities, they have to be done a certain way. You've got an inspector out there making sure it's done a certain way. None of this was done whenever I was remodeling my house. You know, the, the framing, you know, it, by code, I think it has, you know, the two by fours in the walls, they're supposed to be on sixteen inch centers. You know, good God, my walls are all over the place. You know, I don't have, you know, studs on, on any kind of center.
Okay, so what's the point? What point are you making?
There was no, there's no sense in having a building code if there's nobody inspecting the workmanship. Because the studs have to be on, by code, the studs have to be on centers. So unless you're going to have somebody out there inspecting, make sure the studs are on centers, there's no sense in having that building code. It's just, it's, it's, it's folly.
So what's your proposal?
Get rid of the building codes. I, I really, you know, when, when I did, you know, I'd, and I've, I've got, you know, enough structural integrity in the water, electric, uh, framing in my house. I'm not overly concerned with it, you know, anything happening to it. The only thing they did is there, there was, uh, let's say for an occupancy permit, uh, you know, there, there was the safety thing like Anna was talking about. And I've seen a punch list that was available at the city hall. Annette gave me a copy of a punch, I call it punch list, a list of safety things if it's a rental property. And really, that was the only inspection I really went through on my home. You know, the, they, they told me, well, we've got the code council, international code council of whatever year. They didn't check, make sure anything was up to that code. They just want to make sure I got no open frayed wire, you know, showing that you're going to come along and get yourself electrocuted. They weren't, nobody has ever looked to see what my, how my house was built, so why have that code? You know, an occupancy, you know, a preliminary inspection for safety for an occupancy permit, I had no problem with, you know, that thing that Annette gave me.
That, that makes more sense to me instead of, you know, safety codes for new homes, okay, that makes sense. But you've got to have somebody out there constantly checking it. But an occup, the list that we have for safety for occupancy makes more sense than saying that, okay, these ordinance have to be followed. Okay, because it is a safety issue. That's really what it is. Is your house safe to be in?
Can we beat that horse?
Can we beat that horse?
Yeah, we beat that horse.
Oh, well, I've, I've mouthed off.
No, that's why you're here. That's what, that's what we want to do. We want, we don't want anybody to be cut off. Really, honestly, I, I, I don't, if I said that and it was out of line, I apologize.
No, no, it's just, that's what I was.
Because that's, but you know, we do want to keep things moving along too as far as everything, so. But, um, you know, we, we do want to hear from you because that, that's something we're missing in our board meetings. We're missing the opportunity for people to speak what they want to speak and as much as they want to speak, if they've got questions or concerns.
And how does that begin with the sunshine law?
What's that?
The citizen's ability to speak.
So far, I haven't been able, I haven't been able to find it, uh.
First amendment.
It's a first.
Well, that's what I was waiting for somebody else to say.
Yeah, that's the first amendment. As far as complaints to the, to the sunshine law, it doesn't seem to go anywhere because they're only concerned about certain things on the sunshine end of it. But hopefully we're going to get some training in that because they can come to, to, you know.
And it should be open to the public, so citizens can come and learn, so they can sit there in the meetings and observe.
The sunshine law just tells you how to conduct the meetings and how to run the meetings and not have additional meetings that compromise the real meeting. You know, you can have so many little meetings that it negates the main meeting.
Exactly.
That's the whole purpose of the sunshine law.
I know, I went through training, so I know what the sunshine law is.
Absolute.
It's transparency.
Yeah.
Dennis has his hand up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate everybody's comment, but the thing that I want you to understand.
We can't hear you.
The thing that I want you to understand, everybody here, that town, town meetings are not town hall meetings like we're having now.
We understand.
It's a business meeting. So therefore, you should have a voice in the saying what, what is passed, ordinances wise and all that, okay? But your alderman should be telling you what's coming up so that you can go to a meeting and, and make those comments that you want to make. Your alderman, that, your ward should be telling you that, hey, we got ordinance so and so coming up. Uh, what's your opinion on this or whatever? And would you like to make a comment? And they can get you on the agenda so you can speak.
Okay, so how does the alder, how does the alder person do that? Do we get a monthly letter from our alderman telling us that this is what we're going to?
No, but.
Are we supposed to call you and you not answer?
No, they should call you.
Okay, well, listed in the book. And I have not received one call about anything.
Dennis, it's.
I'm just saying that, okay, I'm, I'm just saying that it's fine that, 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 that you guys are doing this and I, I appreciate it. It's great. The point is, is that at a, at a board meeting, that is for the board to conduct business. It's not a town hall meeting like we're having now.
No, no.
It's a whole different ballgame.
Okay, Dennis?
We know that.
We understand that, um, the issue I think that we're having with, and I'm not being naughty, I'm just making a statement, is that the job of the board is to run the meeting, to run it efficiently, okay, to keep it going. But there has to be a point when the public can make a statement. And you've got it timed. Even that's not necessarily right, but hey, that's okay. You've got it timed. As long as that citizen is not being disrupted, they should be allowed to say what they want to say. There are times, and I'm just making a statement, in the past that has not happened. What we need to do is ensure that from now on, that does not occur again. So we need to protect everybody's rights, even if they don't agree with what you're doing, at least being able to say, hey, I don't agree with it, okay? This is the tal, this is where we go and try to hammer out the things as a citizen, okay? This is where we need to hammer out stuff to provide the board with our suggestions, our thoughts, uh, volunteerisms, whatever we're trying to do for the city. Because I love this city, okay? This little community is my community. I don't see me leaving here, all right? So I want to do what I can to make it better, all right? And that's why I'm here. This is, this is the meeting where we do that, okay?
That's right.
So, but the board meeting at the same time is to conduct business. And it's not a popularity contest, okay?
Non-political platform, nothing?
Okay, okay. That's incorrect. No. Now, you, you guys have made it a non-political platform, but that's incorrect. Because as a citizen, I can tell my aldermen I do not like the job they're doing. That's not politicking. That is me expressing my opinion. That's not politicking. Politicking is when I'm basically trying to go and get myself in that position. That's politicking. So that is an incorrect term and I want to state that. That being said, when I go to a city meeting and I see something I think is wrong, I should have the right at the, the public forum to be able to stand up and say, hey, that's not right. Okay, because that's accountability, okay? That's why it's public, okay? It does not, it's not anything derogatory to any of the board members sitting up there. It's nothing to do with that. It is just us saying, hey, we're watching what's going on, we're part of this, because you know what? You're not the government, we are.
That's right.
We voted you in there, so we are the government. Without your, our vote, you wouldn't be there. And that's the point that we keep forgetting. Most of the people forget that we put you there, okay? My vote was made. I put in who I wanted in office. Or I voted against that person and somebody else got in office. It doesn't matter. My voice was heard then. But when I see city business going on and I see something that needs to be stated, I don't want to have to worry about being carried off or kicked out of me just because I said what I thought. If I'm not disruptive, if I stand there quietly, politely and civilly, make my statement, I should be able to say it. And it doesn't have to be agreeable.
That is correct, Dana.
That's, that's all that I say that we need to make sure is ensured, is that a person can state their grievances in a polite, civil manner.
Right, should be reflected in the minutes.
Exactly, it should be in the minutes.
And.
Also, I would like, you brought up something that I hope you'll be able to live with. You said that our alder people should contact the citizenry and let them know when important issues are going on and ask their opinion on it. Is that going to happen?
I think what he said was that you are supposed to call Dennis.
No, he said, I asked specifically.
No, not when there's an important ordinance.
I asked specifically. He said that the alderman is supposed to.
That's what he and I have talked about before, that.
He, he said the alder person is supposed to contact their constituents and ask for input. Is that going to happen?
It should be happening.
No, that's not what I asked. You're, you're my alderman.
Dennis, Dennis, the way it's supposed, the way it's supposed to work, okay? You, you put on the agenda, we want to pass, let's say, for example, the yard sale ordinance, okay?
Yeah, we didn't know.
You don't put that out two days before the meeting in the agenda.
Thank you.
Don't tell a per, don't hold, don't tell the citizens about this and then vote on it, do a first and second reading that night without let, hold it, without letting the citizen speak. Before you pass an ordinance.
It wasn't done that way, Jody.
Before, before.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
We got video taken.
Yes, it was.
It was an ordinance and then it wasn't an ordinance, and we, we had that for three or four weeks before it was served.
You all had it. We didn't know anything about it.
When, when you have an ordinance that affects the pe, the citizens, okay? You have got to let those citizens have input before you vote on it. You do not do that.
They were told to do that.
You do not do that. You do not do that. When the agenda comes out, it's too late for a citizen to sign up to speak at that meeting about that subject. They cannot speak until the end of the meeting after it's already voted on. It's, it's over with. That has got to change, Dennis. It has to change. That has, that has been challenged in court and overturned. If I had the money, I could take it into a court and have that overturned. I'm serious.
And Jody, I did go around because I was against the yard sale ordinance and I did take the time between the time I heard about it. And I went around and talked to people and there was no one, no one that wanted it. They thought that was the silliest thing they ever heard because how many yard sales are we bothered?
And she did do that because she come to my house.
It, it was already decided before it ever went into that meeting.
But I, I have.
However, since we have access to newspaper, radio, letter, mail, something that important that impacts on the, quote, quote, economic status of your constituents, you mean to tell me you can't zip off a letter to let people know what you're going to do? I don't know. What do you think about it? That doesn't make any sense.
Hold on just one second. I want to make sure I got this question right. And correct me if I'm wrong, anyone here, something that shouldn't be, so. Are the aldermen or alder persons letting their residents know what important issues are forthcoming? Is that what you were saying, Dennis?
That's what they should be doing.
That's what, that's what I thought.
That's not, maybe not what they're doing, but I'm saying that's what should be done.
You can't say they, Dennis, because you're one of them, just like I am. Not they telling, it's us. We are to tell them. And I, in all the years that I was a resident, you were my alderman, I never heard from you. I didn't even know who you were. Pardon me?
Okay.
Let's not, let's not get, this is getting out of hand. Let's not.
It's not getting out of hand.
It's not getting out of hand.
So we're actually having an opportunity.
We're just trying to get things done straight. There's nobody mad at nobody.
No, that's right.
You know, we just want it, want it run straight like it should be run.
Thank you.
What we're doing is compiling, uh, questions so we can start a dialogue with the board to ensure what we expect from the alder persons are actually happening because they are our representatives. If we sent them there to, uh, take care of these matters and it doesn't happen, then it's a complete failure on their part, not on our part. So if we have dialogue between the two, the alder person and the citizens, then we can ensure our voices are heard. Is, is that not the consensus of the group here today?
That's exactly what we're trying to do here, because then the aldermen know what the citizens are thinking.
And there's no point.
And vice versa.
Yeah, we're hoping to get this bigger.
We're moving forward.
Yes.
Right.
More, more resident in on it. We're not in there out here to get, make mad.
We're a mere thing, you know.
No, no.
Thank you. It's not going to do any good.
It's broken.
And your point was very well spoken, Dennis, in the beginning, that we just want to make sure that the other people that were given the opportunity to be here from the board
That's right.
will know.
That's right.
Nothing will be hidden because you guys are here, they aren't. The mayor should be here, no one else, you know, to hear something.
And I do want to thank you two for coming here because that does mean a lot to us.
Yeah.
David, can I meet you? Your name and number, because we're going to let you know what went on.
I've got to go too.
You gotta, you gotta go catch a deer?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hold on, sign in. Do we need to give his number?
I got married.
I'm going to go.
Let him sign in.
This is my first, I am, I am. I think they're married.
Could you sign in, Mr. Miller?
Later, buddy. Good luck.
I got married. I got married.
Sign in.
Huh?
Go over there and sign in, please. You need to have your own handwriting number.
He knows mine, man.
I know your name too. I got your phone number in my phone, but that don't leave, huh? We're, we're trying to be as official as we possibly can.
Boy, that guy writes too good. That guy writes too good.
What else do we have? What else do we have? We've been here about an hour. Is there anything else we need to discuss at this point?
I'd like to bring up something. It's about the ordinances selective enforcement. And that's, uh, an issue that's been going on for a long time.
What is that?
I had just received a letter from our chief of police citing one of my vehicles that the plates had expired in September. And they weren't renewed, so he quoted from, uh, Missouri, uh, the city ordinances about derelict vehicles. And, uh, it's been brought up several times about a city employee who has several that are unlicensed, haven't been licensed in probably ten years, that are sitting there and that person continues on. But other people get notices and get fines and then we had people that had a school bus that the mayor said they couldn't use it for storage. Their home had burned and they were storing things in there while they were rehabbing a place and he says, you can't do that. You can't have the bus there and you're going to have to get rid of it. And it says in here that they can bring it before the board to try to get something worked out and they tried that and it really didn't work out at all. And it's just, it's not fair as far as certain people are left alone and other people are vigorously pursued. And, uh, that's not right. The law should apply the same to everybody. And when, uh, another resident was questioned about his motorcycle, which didn't have a current sticker on it, he had mentioned the city employee and he was told to mind your own blanking business. And this isn't the right, right way to run a town. And this isn't the right, right way to run a town, to selectively enforce ordinances, let people get away with it for, you know, I'm not saying it's a short time, it's been going on for many years. It says, and I remember when Scott Guevara was mayor, Mark had sponsored an amendment or an ordinance on derelict vehicles, saying that if people say, oh, I'm selling it, they only had two months to sell it. And this person has painted on the window for sale and it's been there for years. He didn't sell it within two months, it's still sitting there. And it's right near where the antique mall is. People that come into St. Mary to go to the antique mall, it doesn't reflect good on our area, on our neighborhood. And it's not good to have anywhere, but if they're gonna pick on people way out in Cemetery Road, which we don't have traffic going through, it's a dead end area, then they should focus on that, you know? I had pointed out via email to the police department and the city clerk about some city, some vehicles on a city street right next to a house that burned that had no plates, no city stickers, nothing. And Mark had come by my house for some reason a couple of months ago when I was having a roof put in, and I mentioned to him about it. And I said, well, what about that? I sent that in. And he says, oh, oh, they're getting close to their time, you know, to do something about it. And ended up, one of those vehicles was moved over to the city employee's land. It still doesn't have a city sticker or plates. It's a derelict vehicle according to their state statute, their city ordinance. But it's just unfair and biased. It's not fair and balanced. And I, I really think that's an issue.
So paraphrase what you said is why city ordinance selectively enforced?
Absolutely.
Case in point was some residents who are city workers are given preferential treatment?
Absolutely.
And why? And then what is the ordinances and what does it say? Is that a direct paraphrase of what you were saying?
And those city ordinances conflict with state statutes. State statute says that it's only derelict vehicle if it's considered...
A, a public safety hazard.
A public safety hazard. And if you don't have a current inspection sticker, they're saying it's a public safety hazard. It's really not.
They say the same thing if your tags have not been updated in time.
And I brought, I brought that up to Mark and he said it doesn't matter. We got an ordinance, and I told him an ordinance does not supersede state statute. And he goes, yes, it does. And I showed him, this, I went in, printed off the statute that says the city ordinance will not supersede a state statute. And he still contends that they have, if the city has an ordinance, it doesn't matter what the state statute says. Now, I've talked to him about that a number of times.
And a, addition to this statement is do they conflict with state statute?
There you go.
Now, I always think we've brought up to the city clerk and he will wrap it up to the city board for them to, because they are always thinking.
Yeah.
He doesn't, he doesn't say yes or no. Yes, I do.
I appreciate what Mr. Gerardo's saying, and I think Mr. Gerardo's right about the city employee, okay? The one thing I want to correct you on, Jody, is the fact is, is that we cannot be less than the state minimum. In other words, the state, state statute says this, we cannot be less as a municipality, but we can be more strict as a municipality than the state statute.
It, it depends on how the statute is, is worded. Because the statute is written...
You have to be at least up to the state minimum.
The statute is written that a state, I mean, a, a municipality can pass an ordinance if it is deemed by the city to be a public safety hazard. If it's deemed to be a subject, public safety hazard, okay? That is exactly what the, the statute states. And I brought that up in a city meeting years ago and Tim M was in there and Carl White. And I said, you know, how, how are you gonna explain? I want somebody to please explain to me how the little color of that sticker on the license plate and the number that's on there makes that vehicle a public safety hazard. And Wyatt, Mayor Wyatt said, well, we'll get with the city attorney and we'll get back to you. That's been eight or 10 years ago, I haven't heard anything. Okay?
As a part of Dennis to add another question to this ordinance. You're saying, well, the question would be, how strict can the ordinance be in interpreting the state statute? Would that be a correct paraphrase of what you...
What I'm saying is, is that a municipality has to meet the state minimum. That's a, that's, that's, that's a mandatory thing.
Right, I understand.
We have to follow state statutes.
And you're right, I understand what you're saying, but...
But the municipality can pass a law, ordinance that is stricter than the state minimum. Is that what I'm saying?
I think that should be researched. Okay, okay, I have a question about that, then. On that same analogy, then, that means a state can have a more severe law than the federal government. And they cannot do that. They cannot oversee or supersede a federal government law. If the federal government says this is illegal, the state has to go with it.
Okay, I'm just telling you what I know, okay?
I'm just saying analogy wise. It needs to be researched.
If you find out something different, then I'll be glad to entertain that. But to my knowledge, as many years as I've been in, is that we have to meet all state statutes.
Well, then this needs to be researched.
The city ordinance can be stricter than the state minimum, but not less than the state.
But like I said, it, it, that, you have to look at how the, the ord, the statute is written. It says that the city may impose a, you know, enact an ordinance if, if the vehicle is deemed to be a public safety hazard, okay? So that takes that, what you, normally what you're saying would, I would, I would totally agree with. But it, it, um, it quantifies when that can occur.
Yes, yes.
Okay? If that vehicle is deemed to be a public safety hazard. If it's not a public safety hazard, the city does not have the right to go ahead and enact that ordinance. That's, I mean, I'm not an attorney, that's the way I see it. I've, I've read, I've done all kinds of legal research. And if is a, you know, qualifying word that, you know, it's like shall versus may, okay? That changes everything, just which word is used as a qualifier.
I have a question for you. Since Toby's truck is sitting in the yard, it does, I'm not gonna, I don't have the city sticker on it. It's a, I took the insurance off of it. And it doesn't come up for inspection until the last of December, and I'm selling it. Where do I go from there if it's gonna be a hazard to the city's, uh...
It shouldn't.
Shouldn't, huh? I don't know.
Dennis, she had a question for you.
I'm not sure I know how to answer that, but I do know that if it, if it is not licensed and, and, uh, you have two months from the time of December, I guess the end of December, to sell it.
Can you go to the, um...
You can request a renewal.
An extension?
You can request an extension. I do believe that's possible. Well, then you got two months from that time to sell it without having to worry about any letters or anything else that'd be a derelict vehicle, okay? If, according to what his letter is saying or whatever, Mr. Gerardo's saying that, I don't know, because I haven't investigated it, okay? But if that, if your, if your thing does not have to be renewed until the end of December, you have two months after that to sell it. And if you don't sell it within that time, I would imagine there is an avenue that you can request an extension.
Would you like to go to the alderperson? Call your, call your alderman and ask?
Dennis?
Well, like I said, I don't know.
I'd have to get him round the bar first.
Dennis, to clarify your statement, is this correct? The city ordinance can be stricter than the state statute minimum according to what it is.
Do you know where you got that information?
Board training?
Board training? Oh, you got board training? That's great, we haven't had any of that in years. We need to have some of that. There, I do know that there is, you know, there, there is some of what he's saying is, I know for a fact too because I stopped by a business in town that has, is well-known for having a lot of trucks and equipment, just helter-skelter everywhere, looks awful. And they were fixing it up a little bit and they had it much neater. And I said, what happened to all those vehicles that were sinking in the ground? The lights were busted out and the windshields and everything. And the man said, well, the police chief told us to push them against the fence back there, which is the water department, and hide them behind those others. So there is something that needs to be, that needs to be looked at. Because, you know, you can't do that to somebody and then let other people just get by with it just because maybe...
You didn't get Ms. Thomas, Ms. Gladys's. She wants to know that she's selling Toby's truck. All of his stuff expires the end of December. And if it's not sold by then, is there an avenue for her to get an extension if it's not sold by February?
That's what Dennis was saying.
No, he said it might be, but she would need, she needs an answer.
Okay. I heard everything Gloria said and I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
With Mark, because he's the legal authority on the ordinance and because that's how Frank got his letter. But on behalf of Gladys, I'd be more than happy to work with all the persons and see what is the truth. Uh, let me, let me make a point here because in my conversation with the city clerk, we covered a summation of everything that's coming forth here. There have been many things that happened in this city that wasn't altogether right or altogether wrong. However, the way it was interpreted or the way it was rebutted made it worse than what it was. And that was one of the purviews or one of the reasons why we wanted to start having these town hall meetings to let people know when things happen, there's rumor and that's true. The rumor takes precedence over the truth. And in the past, those who chose to rebut the issue hasn't, haven't rebutted it in a manner that was worthy for the city to stand behind. So the city stood back. And that wasn't necessarily right. So the city clerk and I was talking about that, like the abandonment of Locust Street, Mark's driveway. Many times in the past, they said, why have they plowed Mark's driveway? They don't plow ours. However, they didn't know that was a city street. Because a whole lot of streets in St. Mary does not go through.
I will tell you this too, okay? Mark is a first responder and has to get out in the case of emergency. So whether it sits in the driveway or the street, it will be plowed. The city won't maintain it, put gravel and stuff on it and, and do that kind of stuff. But in, in a, in a, in the wintertime, his, his driveway will be plowed because he's a, he has to get out for emergency. He's a responder, is a first responder.
Okay.
As a police, right?
As policeman.
Not as a certified.
Not, not as a certified.
So in other words, he's supposed to respond to everything?
He's supposed to.
He's a law enforcement person.
Right, that's exactly what I...
Okay, well then, then I, then I want to ask if the same thing is being done for each and every fire department member that is on the fire department? Because when I was on the fire department and it snowed and we had an accident or something, there were a lot of times we had to get out on our own and deal with it. I mean, we were first responders too, okay? I understand the situation. I'm just saying that if we're going to do it for one, then we need to do it for all.
Now, uh, let me, let me back you up on that and I'll get the clarification for you. I'll get, I'll get an answer for you because I met with the ambulance administrator, Mr. Trump, and he explained to me volunteer departments work differently from...
Paid departments, that's right.
Yes, and he said that some are at work during certain times of the day when they do plow. So that is one of the reasons why that's not...
Okay, well, that's a clarification, that's, that's, that's cool.
And that's what I was telling you. Some things have happened in the past and it hadn't been explained. If it would have just been explained, everyone, that would have said, okay, go figure and keep on moving.
Good question too. Why is it they always plow my drive shut? I couldn't even get out of my apartment.
Mine too, mine too. I'm on the highway. They, they plow mine shut too.
Well, they do, well, they shouldn't do that.
Yes, they do. They plow mine shut, but you've had to clear it.
I, I know, I know that's happened in the past. But they have been told to lift that plow up when they cross people's driveway to try to prevent that.
That's a good reason, that's a good one.
I mean, they've been told to do that. I mean, I, I totally understand what you guys are saying because they've done it to me too.
Who follows up to see that, I mean, just spot checks? Who they're accountable to?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be Clyde Kaufman.
He don't get out of the tavern unless they're on, see where the streets are at.
I can't answer, I can't, I can't say one way or another on that.
I do, because I have him here.
I just know that that's his job in the wintertime.
Okay, so I'm asking the question, what is it that we can do when the snow is plowed, blocks our driveway?
On the state, you can't do anything, I'll tell you that right now.
A big car?
You have to, state can...
No, the city has come through and I stood there at my door and watched them plow that snow up against my head.
By the time the state made two or three sweeps, it taxes because I've had to, I've had to go dig you out.
I know.
And I'm talking about it's four to six inches of snow.
Yeah, it is a mess.
Well, maybe we need to, maybe we need to talk with the state engineer and see if there is anything. I have his number in my phone.
Okay, that's why...
I can contact him and find out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But as, as far as city residents, they've been told to lift their plow when they go across the driveway.
We don't do it.
Well, I think that there need to be a check, a spot check.
But I kind of noticed that when they come past my house, they have it plowed the whole time.
Somebody needs to do a spot check. Especially since now that it has been put on record by citizens that it was happening.
Well, they've known it for two, three years.
Fine with me, that's fine.
We also need a safety issue on Circle Drive because that is a battle. It's been a battle for the last four years to get that street plowed in a reasonable amount of time so that those children of the bus stop or people coming up or down that hill be able to get back. And it's the only outlet we have in a dead end subdivision. It's the only in and out we have. It's not safe for our street not to be cleared so that people can get up and down it and so that people won't slide into the ravine or into a side of a semi on 61 if they're coming down. And I, and one of my neighbors told me that he actually, he, he actually had damage to his car because he slid as he was trying to come up because of the last winter in the, in the... I didn't know about it until just recently, he told me about it because I was, we were talking about some things, so...
So the question is, will the city streets be checked to ensure the snow removal work is being done? Is that...
Well, we need to, at least in places where there is no other outlet. I think, you know, that, that, like in our subdivision, there is no other outlet for us to go a different route to get out of our subdivision or to get into our subdivision, and that's a steep hill. Now, other places in town, they're, I mean, they make sure there are plenty black and cinder and, you know, with salt. Fourth street usually plows, but if fourth street isn't, that blocks all of us in our area too because we can't go down Third Street, Sycamore. I mean, that, that, that won't cut it because that's, that's a skating rink going down that. So, yeah, there are certain ones that have to be plowed just for safety reasons. And those should be priority. Well, fourth street usually is because of the manor, but...
What are the streets? What's the...
Fourth street is our main entrance and circle. Circle and circle, but Churchill also, that's a pretty... You know, those are...
The snow route.
Oh, the snow route, it must be plowed.
Right goes Kaufman.
Yeah, it must be plowed.
Right.
They don't have a choice in that, they have to do that for emergency purposes.
But I've, I've heard people trying to get through there can't.
We have to just kind of go for priorities, I think, with, you know, with the guys. I'm sure the guys, if we talk to them, they would understand that that's, those are the issues that we have.
Another concern is animal control. Gladys was bit by a dog and it...
You, what?
He not exactly bit me, but he scared the shit out of me. I don't know that.
But it's close enough. Did they find the dog?
They know who it is and evidently the dog's gotten out several times and attacked other dogs and... They know who it is and evidently the dog's gotten out several times and attacked other dogs and it's. It's being handled locally instead of gone through county animal control. Because to go to an alderman who's going to try to get the cop to come out and do something, it, it's just a big waste of time. It should go straight to county and, and the city shouldn't really, they're not qualified or trained or specialized in animal control and they need to.
Or have a true holding pen.
Have it taken care of by professionals. That it's their job. They'll quarantine the dog or whatever the situation. If it's attacking other dogs.
Let me, let me get the question right. Who is, who is handling animal control for the city?
Right now, it's.
No, 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 no. This is the question that's going forward. Because you expressed the concern. We need to know how to address it. So isn't the question would be, who is handling animal control for the city?
Why isn't county specializing in it?
We can't mandate anything about it. We got to ask, first of all, you know, who's responsible for it? And then if they are responsible for it, then we need to ask them, "Why aren't they doing it?" You see what I'm saying? But you got to get the first in.
Okay, but.
But they don't have the capabilities.
But my point is, is the person who's been put over animal control, okay, number one, isn't trained to actually go after that. That's one. They don't have anywhere to hold the animal once it is captured to do whatever's necessary. The only ones that have this right now is the county. They have their, their little pound and they have somebody who comes out and has a cage. They can put the animal in. They're the ones who have somebody who's actually trained to do it. My question is, why are we requiring an alderman to be in charge of that when they, we don't really have the facilities to do that? That, that shouldn't be a requirement for the, an alderman to have to do. We should just tell the citizens, "Okay, well, here's the number of this officer in the county that does this."
So you're saying, who is handling animal control and where we require?
I know who's handling animal control right now.
It's technically the police department, but it's supposed to be the police department.
Did it, did it say?
To defer to an alderman.
Dennis?
We do have a holding, two holding pens down at the wastewater plant where the dog, we call it Dog Mountain. We do have dog food for dogs. If the dog is identifiable by their tag from the city, then we try to return it to the owner. If we don't, if it's a stray dog and nobody takes ownership, that's when they're transported to the county.
Well, who's the one who goes up to capture the animal?
It should be Mr. Beckett under the direction of animal control. Because he has the leashes and everything else and.
And again, you've got, if you have to constantly jump hoops to get to Mr. Beckett, you know, you have to go through an alderman. You have to go, then you have to try to catch her or she's at work or she might not be home or whatever. I mean, you, you've got.
Red tape.
Yeah, you've just got a mess. It, it needs to be a little bit smoother.
That's why I've, I've phrased this, this way. Who's handling animal control and where we require them to perform their duties?
There you go. That's a good, good way to put it.
That way you don't point the finger and offend someone. You find out exactly who's doing it and then you inquire of that person or that department, "What are you going to do about this concern?"
That's right.
Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense.
Well, Mr. Freelix, it is not an alderman's job to have a supervisory position to begin with. It's just something that this, this city has decided that it's necessary to do. We are not administrators. We're not supervisors. We are legislated. Here is alderman.
And I would like to add to that. We're not a big city. We don't have a city administrator. We can't afford to pay a city administrator. And a city administrator would handle all that, what you're talking about. So each one of the aldermen has been requested to take on a department to oversee, not to run, to oversee. That it is being done the way it should be done.
Additional duty?
That's right. To see that they, they would see that that department is running smoothly and then make a report to the board. They're not, they're not supervisors. You're right. They are not. They are there just to see that that department is running as smoothly as it should be, period. They're not operators like me or anything like that. They're, they're just there to see that that department is running the way it should be running. And if it's not, then report to the board so the board can take action. That's all. But they, we have to have it that way because we don't have a city administrator. So I, I, I don't want to make anybody mad or upset, but that's, that's why we have aldermen that are in charge of departments, not to run it, but to see that it is operating smoothly and make a report to the board.
Okay, my question is, do you think the board would allow citizens to assist alderpersons in these city functions, you know, the duties, seeing that we have two aldermen?
That would be something that could be discussed. I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed of it to myself. As kind of like a, just like they do in the big police departments. They have citizens overseeing the police department to see that things are being done the way they should be done. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with any committee that would come in and, and, and want to help the, help the board of aldermen do their job. I, I will, I, I would not be objective to that.
Because there are probably people in this town that we don't even know that they would come out because they have the education, the training background or whatever to do those things.
Not only that, it would allow them to be part of the community and be doing something positive for the community.
Part of the solution.
Yeah, right. Exactly. And there's plenty of us, I think, some of us sitting here right now want to be part of the solution. We don't want to be the problem. We want to, we want to solve problems and make it smoother for the town to continue.
And on that note, I think that last meeting was the most positive city board meeting I have seen in my twenty-one years in St. Mary's. And I think your statement of thanking them for their services equal people telling service members, "Thank you for your service." I think that was great.
Well, that's, they are serving.
I think that was very, very positive.
We were talking about not having an economic base in this community, okay? We know there's some land where we can do some stuff. My question to the board is, what would the board be willing to do for a company that might be coming in? And I know that the, what is it, the Chamber of Commerce might be in on it. But what would the city be willing to, to entertain as far as concessions for any business that might want to come in?
Okay. I, I appreciate that question and I'll, I'll answer it for you right now. The city itself would not be able to offer much to any business in this town that come in. As far as tax breaks or anything like that, that would not be feasible for the city to do that. But the county, now you don't have to pay county tax for five years or whatever. If we could get the county to agree to something like that so we can get business in here, that would be a much more benefit to a, a, a entrepreneur than, than whatever the city could do because the city's limited in what it could do.
Limited in how, financially?
Financially, that's correct. It would be very limited.
This is why I've been trying to go to trainings on economic development. And of course, that's not acceptable because I, I don't know why, but that's where my interest is. It's not, I'm, I'm, you know, as far as supervising all these other things as, as Mr. Obay stated, that's not my strong suit. But working with people in this way would be, and I have. I worked with Kimco, but it was too late by the time the board heard about Kimco coming in and going into Sabreliner. They wanted that place. I toured it with them and a banker. And they said, "This is perfect. It's everything that we need to do ours." But it was the last week in November by the time, they, they thought that we didn't want anything. And I said, "Well, that's the first time the board has heard about it when it came to the November meeting." So I put it together and we, we toured it and by that time it was already, everything was already being.
Auctioned.
Yeah, marked for, for auction. So it was too late and they had government contracts. They had government contracts ready to go. Now, what would that have meant to us if, if somebody had not kept it a secret from the board that this company wanted to come in?
That would have been money in the city right there.
Exactly. But somebody didn't want to do that job. Yes, hiring, they were. I have been to different things. I have, I went recently to the first opportunity that I, I knew of regional planning. And I went there and I, I talked to a couple of people, just did some networking. This is a thing that just gets me excited, is the economic development. And then I look at this land, it's just down the hill from where I live. And I see that, you know, there is something that could be put on there. When I talked to Tish, she says, the, it's, it's not, you know, you're not going to, this, in the twenty-first century, you're not going to necessarily be build, building big factories on big pieces of land. It's going to be cottage businesses. We had an opportunity to bring broadband in here. Businesses need broadband. They don't need U-verse. They don't need all that little stuff. They need broadband. The children in our town, they need that because we are so far behind. I mean, it just, it's, they, they, they do everything on the computer. And you know that if you have children in school, you know they don't have school books anymore. They have that. So we, we just, and, and that was, you know, slashed out because people didn't like what they want, where they wanted to put it, which is done in every other city that they've done it. They put it where, where this, these people wanted to do it. I have tried to talk with this person and tried to get him to come back. And they said, "Well, when, when your board agreed to let me talk, then I will," but we have not, you know, we, we are just.
Now that you brought that up, was that, was that ever put out before the, the citizenry to even have input in it? See, that's one of those important occurrences that the citizenry of St. Mary should have some input in. We should be advised of that by our alderman, our alderperson, that this is on the limb. This is to be discussed. And, and since you all work for us, we should have some input on keeping this town from dying. And, and none of us in here have heard any.
I've never heard about broadband being spoken of.
This is news to me.
And that was, that was months ago.
I know, and I've looked at that. I thought that that place where Sabreliner is, is an excellent place for any little small business. And Dennis, I, I heard you when you said that the city is not, I took it the city is not in a position to do anything to help business. How can you expect the town to grow if you don't have some type of discretionary fund to help economic development? That's, that should be one of the governmental tasks of the city government.
It should be one of the supervisory positions.
I'm just making a statement. In my experience, that has been one of the taskings of the city government, is to have a discretionary fund to help bring businesses in here. And we have nothing.
Who has the permission to tell people that they can't come in?
If the board don't vote on it.
If the board, if the board votes against it.
If the board makes it, it's done. And we don't know anything about it.
All it takes is three votes to put it out.
And so, Mr. Freelix, will you make a notation and ask that we, the citizenry be advised of, you've done it before?
Well, I have two questions in reference to that.
Okay, thank you.
Directly from around, can we network for businesses with the surplus of land? That's the first one. Is that good enough to ask, to pass on? And secondly, will the citizens be told about economic development opportunities?
And have input?
And have input. Because I, I know at least two or three that never came out alive for the citizens. Like that, that sand thing that was going to be down there and it, it came.
Propan.
Propan. And it went down by the Lutheran and several other things that came up. But the citizen, if you don't hear it through the grapevine, you don't hear it.
They packed up and moved across the river. After they put in a second rail and everything because of the noise ordinance.
Put up a wall.
That they were issued tickets on.
Put up a wall. That's what they do by experience.
So you say, will the citizens be told about economic development opportunities and have input, right?
Correct.
You had something, Dennis?
Yes, I did. In reference to broadband, okay? We got a proposal for broadband to be brought in here and put antennas on our, our water towers, okay? And I gave them some specifications that I needed to, and answers that I needed to have answered for myself, okay? One was security. Do we let them in anytime they want to go in there and do whatever they got to do? Who's going to be available? Are they going to have a key to our gate or whatever to get into the water tower? Things like that, okay? And, you know, as long as they didn't interfere with getting up onto the, to inspect the towers and stuff like that. You know, certain things like that. Those questions were never answered, so, and I never heard anything back from broadband. So I don't know if they want to try again or, or what, but as long as those questions get answered, you know, I don't have to call somebody in on their off day to go open the gate for them to come in or whatever. Or if there's a, a, a place that we could have, give them a key or whatever to get in and out. And security, I can keep the security and integrity of my, my stamp acts and I, I don't, I really don't have a problem. But those questions were never answered and I, and I never heard back from them, so.
You had, you had a contact number, right, and a person?
I did not.
Who had the contact? How did you?
I guess.
It would be, it would be on the, the proposal that, if you still have a proposal.
How did you relay your, your messages to them?
Through the city clerk and the mayor.
Okay, so why was there not a follow-up?
I have no clue. Because there was, I don't know what happened.
Well, I followed up, I followed up and he, he said that, you know, whenever the board was willing to let him come in, he was more than willing to talk to them, but.
Okay, well, here, here's my suggestion too. They're talking about just the water towers.
I follow up on stuff.
We have the Granery, which is one of the tallest buildings around.
What is?
The Granery.
Yeah, right across from the post office.
Right across from the post office. This is one of the tallest buildings around. We have the Catholic church property up there, which the.
But you didn't hear what she said, did you? The board, when they let them come in and talk to them.
But there are other possibilities of where this could be located and it would not have to necessarily be located on the water tower. That being said, that being said, that could be something that if we were contacting this person, we might be able to talk and get him to come back in without having to involve a secure city site that has to be sta, kept secure in the same way. In other words, it'd be a little easier to get to these other sites than it would necessarily.
That's not a problem.
The old head end that's in the antique mall parking lot from the defunct cable company.
Yes, you know, actually, I did talk to them about that, what happened with that. I'll have to check back on that, but. Because I told him about that. I think you said something about it and I said, "We have that, there's stuff out there." And that's, you know, maybe the antique mall didn't.
Oh, they just, they, from what they told me, the owners are gone and it's defunct. They don't know who, who's going to get that equipment out of there.
D and D's been gone, huh? Someone else took it over.
And then.
That would be a high.
They're gone and the utility, electric company, I went and pulled all their plant down because they were supposed to be paying a dollar a pole rental for the cable plant. Nobody was paying it, so they just pulled it all down. So there's no plant anywhere.
But the whole idea is, there are some other possibilities that we could present to this person and present to the board and make it a little bit more advantageous for everybody so that city property itself may not be necessarily involved. But we'd still bring in something that would help our city grow.
You need the broadband to, for, for economic, you can't.
That is a great selling point for, would be a great selling point for the community, the fact that we have broadband. Because not every community has that.
Well, they were also scuffing it. They were only going to pay them like a hundred dollars a month for their antenna on the water tower. And that's practically what we're paying for internet access for City Hall. So it would pay for itself, but, you know, they can't say, "Oh, we want this much because we don't have that widening." We don't have that area and that customer, future customer base for them to say, "Okay, we can pay you a, you know, ten thousand a month" when it's not going to be enough homes per mile for them to make money on it.
They have to make money. They can't, they can't give their profits away.
Well, the question would be, directly from around Dennis, Diana, will communication proposals be allowed? will communication proposals be allowed for new businesses to come in? Communication businesses, because most small town rural communities all across America are using these granaries and tall structures for cell phones and other communication.
Does it cheaper than building a new tower?
Yeah, because you don't have to build anything. All you gotta do is maintain it. And most people that put these towers up or put these servers up on these large structures, pay X amount of dollars per month, right?
Are they offered this money?
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and you guys would normally give them a key so they can get it if a server goes down so they can go in and not interrupt anybody and fix it and go on like a business. But is that a thing, will communication proposals be allowed for new businesses with that?
I just wanna know what they're doing trying to bring new businesses in.
I was concerned also about the integrity of the tank. If they drilled holes into the tank.
I don't think they.
That, that would probably just go on a rail, handrail. It would probably go on a handrail.
None that goes on a rail.
D and R's concerned.
I'm just saying, that was one of the issues I wanted to answer.
But nobody talked with you, so you didn't know?
That's right.
D and R, I told them their only concern would be if they're gonna run a cable up there, that they attach it to the ladder going up so they wouldn't catch on it and et cetera. And it wouldn't be a safety hazard. But it's not gonna ruin the water or do anything like that. That wasn't any of their concern.
That wasn't their concern, that was my concern.
Well, they're professionals. They would know what they were doing.
But they never got back what you said.
But nobody ever got back, so, I mean, it's a moot point.
Well, I can bring it up to the board. I can bring it up to the board.
Because sometimes, sometimes it takes more than one or two or three times of following up.
Well, it might not have been the right time. It might be the right time, isn't it?
But with the whole idea of having some alternate sites available, that I think would help because then it gives the, the board a, a, a better selection of what might be more viable and easier to deal with. Okay, whereas maybe the water towers are known in their mind. The granary might say, hey, yeah, no problem. The Catholic church might say, hey, no problem. Who knows? There's different things, the antique mall. Having different sites possible gives this company and the board a better selection, a better choice. They can make a more informed selection and decision. Because right now, as a citizen, I see great attributes for broadband because if we bring in five broadband, there's other companies that can come in and operate off of that. That is a big selling point for our town. We could sit there and spout, St. Mary has broadband. That's a big selling point.
Well, internet business.
Yeah, but having broadband in itself is a big selling point to get people to move into your community and businesses to move in. That is a big thing.
Dennis, I gotta go. Thank you very much.
That would be a great step. Thanks for coming, Dennis. That would be a great first step to, to growing a community.
Dennis, one thing, when I had talked about the renewable energy that voters approved years before for us to go solar in some areas like on our streetlights where there's shovel-ready money available at the utility companies that all I have to do is ask for the money and they'll give it to us and we can put up solar lights, streetlights, et cetera, so that we're not dependent on them. And you were gonna take it to.
I did.
And you said they liked it and nothing ever happened.